Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next we have approval of the minutes. These are minutes from the regular Board of Directors meeting from April 18th. Then there's minutes of a special Board of Directors meeting from May 2nd, which was the Governor Jay Inslee visit with us at Henrietta Lacks Health and Biosciences High School. Minutes of a special board meeting of the directors on May 4th, which is a community tour. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Do I have any discussion regarding the consent agenda?
Yes, I have to recuse myself as a result of a remote interest.
I need to recuse myself from that same accounts payable warrant voucher.
Okay.
Move that we approve the consent agenda with the recusal.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We have two special recognitions tonight, the first being School Nurse Day, which is May 10th. Obviously, a very important function in our schools for our students. So I'd like Director Parsons to read the proclamation.
My pleasure. Those nurses are important, critical, and so caring and loving of our kids. I know from personal experience. We have a proclamation from the State of Washington, whereas children are the future and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow; and whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school; and all students have a right to have their health needs safely met while in the school setting; and whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years; and whereas student nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and provide a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children; and whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children; and whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak; and whereas school nurses are members of school-based mental health teams; and whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for every child every day; and whereas it is important to offer gratitude for the state's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy, ensuring that they remain in school and are ready to learn. Now therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim May 10th, 2017, as School Nurse Day in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed by my hand, Governor Jay Inslee.
I would like to call Holly Long, our manager of nursing services, up. She probably will share with us a little bit about nursing, and then we can present the resolution to Holly. Thanks, Holly.
Normally, I would get up here and share some statistics about the children in our district that have severe health conditions, but this year I want to turn the table and thank Superintendent Dieter for his support of school nursing over the last 11 years.
Thanks, Holly. Come on up, and we'll give you the resolution. Thanks so much. I really appreciate it.
Well, I know that the role of the nurses in our schools is so critical, and I'm still thinking back on days when my girls were still in school, and there was a broken arm incident in the playground, and a school nurse was there to comfort my very upset child and get her taken care of until I could get there and get her to the doctor. I just know that we have kids with so many challenges that come to school with all kinds of issues, and many of them medical, and some of them severe medical. And so having that support of our nurses is really critical. So I appreciate everything that you do for our students. Thank you for that.
I just want to say, I think people would be shocked at how many diabetic kids we have, and how many kids with seizure disorder, how many kids with other kinds of disorders or needs that our nurses take care of quietly, get it done, keep kids in the classroom where they belong, and learning continuing. And I think we have a most dedicated nursing corps that is always more than willing to put the time and effort in to help kids be successful. And I, for one, really appreciate that and the support our kids get to be learners.
So next, we have more recognition, and it's Teacher Appreciation Week, the week of May 8 through the 12th. That resolution.
Appreciation Day today.
Yes, it is.
Well, it's week. So it's a double appreciation.
Whole week, excitement.
The State of Washington proclamation. Whereas a strong, effective system of free public school education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government; and whereas the United States has made considerable progress in the social, technological, and scientific fields due to our system of free and universal public education; and whereas much of this progress can be attributed to the qualified and dedicated teachers entrusted with the educational development of our children; and whereas teachers provide opportunities for students to connect with the world around them, develop basic skills for success in life and work, experience the realization of high expectations and the fulfillment of steps toward achievable goals; and whereas teachers should be accorded high public esteem, reflecting the value placed on their skills and abilities and the importance of public education; and whereas it is appropriate that teachers be recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating their students. Now therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim May 8th through 12th, 2017, as Teacher Appreciation Week, and May 9th, 2017, as Teacher Appreciation Day in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed, 17th day of March, 2017, Governor Jay Inslee.
And I'd like Rob to come up and receive the proclamation and have a word if he'd like to do so.
Rob with a cool speech, or whereas statements this time. But other than, I guess, I get to know that, I get to say that I work really hard because I know the teachers are working even harder than I am, that it's a really great opportunity I have to represent their interests. And on top of that, I get to represent nurses' interests too, which is really cool too. And a lot of other really hard workers that are really great for our system, I get to represent their interests as well. So I got a really great job. I enjoy doing it. So thank you very much.
You, Rob.
If I could just add, I, last fall, at the Authors and Illustrators Dinner, I know Todd serves on the Library Foundation Board, well, they had a, the guest speaker who brought up that if any time in your lifetime, if you have the chance to publicly thank your teacher or someone who made a huge impact on your life, if you have that chance, what an impact it makes on that person. And I actually had that opportunity. I was at a banquet where my high school teacher and tennis coach was one Teacher of the Year. And I was, and I had won an award that night too for the credit union, and I was actually able to thank her publicly for being the person who inspired me to be where I am today. And I think we have so many amazing teachers throughout our entire system that are worthy of praise every day by our students and our families. And if we, we all have that one teacher that got us that extra place in our life to get us to where we're at. And so thank you for all of the work of our teachers that they do for our kids every single day.
I can go with you.
They were great though, weren't they?
Yeah, they were. I would say that I probably am in more classrooms in this district than anybody, because I make it all schools and get into classrooms in, at all levels. And what I see in our classrooms is always upbeat for me. I go home, and I go, wow, what a great day. I got to spend time watching great people, great dedicated people, working with our kids and making a difference for our kids every day. And the extra mile that our teachers put in for these children sometimes amazes me, because it's not just teaching them, it's taking care of them. It's making sure they have what they need, whether it's food, whether it's time after school or before school to get help, whether it's to reach out to get supplies or clothing or whatever the case may be. It's just amazing what I see when I go into classrooms and I observe in schools. And I'm proud to work with our teachers, our nurses, and our entire staff. But teachers and nurses are amazing in this district, so I want to thank them, all of them.
I just want to echo what's being said here. I mean, we have great teachers in our district, and they're the ones that really make our district special. Yeah, and we can all think about, you know, our experiences as students, but yeah, when I see the teachers in our district working with the kids, and their jobs just get more and more challenging with the environment and everything, yeah, my hats go off to the teachers. So I'm really glad that this is the week that we can appreciate them with a proclamation.
I just want to add, you know, I agree so much with what Julie was talking about. I mean, it must be so amazing to be in a profession that leaves a lasting memory, like we're talking about. I mean, I have Mr. Tovey, my fourth grade teacher, and he will never leave my mind because he made such an impact on my life. And my daughter's a teacher, and I know how much she cares and feels about her students and the things that she does for them, and it's a passion. It's not a job. And I just am so appreciative of our teachers and what they do for our students every single day. So thank you very much.
You all know this was my K-12 system, so I suppress the urge every time we do this to just start listing off the names of the teachers who impacted me, who are probably still around, even though I know a couple of them have died. And it's right, the impact is lifelong. You can fire a child with a bit of happiness and loyalty, and they never forget it. I've never forgotten it. But I won't list the names, because that's a pretty long list. They know who they are.
Okay, next up, we have some proposals for action. These are policies that have been workshopped and reviewed. They've had a first reading, and now we are here for a second reading for final action on these policies. The first one that we have is Policy 2195. It's Academic Acceleration. This is actually a second reading with a recommendation to rescind the policy.
Yes, if you recall, last year we came to you and asked that we approve this policy because it was a policy that we had to have on the books in order to receive a grant from the State of Washington to support AP students in testing. The state has no longer funded the grant, and we had some real concerns about adopting this policy anyway at the time, and we did it to support children with help in taking their AP test. And we don't see any reason to continue to have this policy on the books, because it would be one that we probably would have trouble following anyway. We want to accelerate every child academically, but this locked us into some things that we don't necessarily want to lock ourselves into. So I haven't heard anything over the last couple of weeks since we had the first reading, so I'm recommending that we vote, that you vote, to rescind this policy.
Do we have any questions or comments by the board?
I wasn't here for the first reading, but I support rescinding this policy, because I believe that using the next course in a sequence is properly the responsibility of a student, her family, his or her family, and the counselor involved who can safely guide them. An automatic process is not the best way to serve a kid.
Rob? Do you have any comments or questions by the audience? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to rescind Policy 2195.
I second that. Oh. I thought you did. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty then, your wish is our command. Next up is Policy 3510, Associated Student Bodies.
Yes, we've had this policy for a number of years, and we're only recommending slight change to some wording that makes us make, that makes us in compliance with the RCWs around associated student bodies and funds. So the only change we're really recommending is that money acquired by associated student body groups through fundraising and donations in compliance with district procedures is new wording. For scholarships, student exchanges, and charitable purpose will be considered private, non-associated student body funds monies, which is the way the law has laid it out. So we're also then correcting the, or eliminating 1315, or 3515 around student incentives and adding 2150 co-curricular programs as a cross-reference to this policy. So again, I haven't had any new questions or anything come across my desk since we had the first reading, so I would recommend that we adopt this policy as it's presented tonight.
Comments or questions? Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Okay, seeing none, now we'll entertain a motion for adoption of Policy 3510.
I move that we adopt Policy 3510.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we move to Policy 6000, Program Planning Budget Preparation Adoption and Implementation.
Which is a new policy that we have not had on the books before, and it's pretty much outlines the budget process that we go through, puts the timelines together as far as when we need to have things completed, and how the process for adopting that budget becomes to the board and is finalized. And it also talks about, or it also legal, has legal references for all of the RCWs and the WACS related to presenting a budget. We run a fiscal year from September 1 to August 31, so we have to have a new budget adopted no later than August 31 to move over to the new year. And we also have to file that with the ESD and with the OSPI by certain dates. We also have to meet the timeline of getting it out so people can review it before, which is July 10th. And the only concern I have right now is that it's really hard to build a budget when there hasn't been a state budget. So there is a piece in here that that July 10th date can float if the operating budget was not adopted at the legislative level by the 1st of June, which it does not appear in my conversations with legislators, that it will be adopted by the 1st of June. But I know that we will have everything in compliance and ready by August 31st so that we can operate school on September 1. And again, I have not had questions or concerns raised in the last couple of weeks, so I would recommend we adopt it and get it in our books.
Questions?
This has just been in our procedure, and we're making it policy.
It complies with the law, and what I really would recommend this for is because then people can, who have questions about the budget, it's much more transparent and can find their questions without having to search too hard, right, or get into RCWs to figure it out, which is really more difficult.
Mike Merle don't want this policy?
Yes, he does.
I see.
Mike wants.
I don't know if he does or not, but yes, he does. Right now.
Questions or comments? Do we have any questions or comments by the audience? Okay, I will entertain a motion for adoption of Policy 6000.
I teased Mike, so I'm going to move that we adopt Policy 6000.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is Policy 6020, System Funds and Accounts.
This is a policy that we've had for a number of years. It changes the name and the number. It used to be 7415. In moving through the WASD numbering process, there's only six chapters in the policy book now instead of nine, so that a lot of this has been collapsed into the six chapters. It used to be in the seventh chapter. It used to be called Administration. It's now called Management Support. And it basically outlines the system of funds that we must keep in accordance with the county treasure and the state law and the accounting manual. And it outlines the general fund, which is the basic money we get from the state, and our levies, Capital Projects Fund, which is for buildings, improvement, and if we had one actual bond at this point in time for construction, a debt service fund to pay back any of our debt, an associated student body fund at each school that will comply with the one we previously adopted this evening, a transportation vehicle fund on how you purchase school buses. And this all lines up with the RCWs that have changed over time. And I, again, have not had any questions or concerns raised over the last couple of weeks, so I'm recommending we adopt it as presented.
Comments or questions? Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adopt Policy 6020.
I move that we adopt Board Policy Number 6020.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we move into policy development. These are policies that have been workshopped by the board and now are being brought forward for a first reading. The first policy that we'll be reviewing tonight is Policy 5321, Sick and Emergency Leave and Benefits, Non-Union Members. This is one that is being recommended as a rescension.
Yeah, thank you. This is Policy 5321, and it's been in the personnel section, and it is a duplicate of a leave policy we adopted earlier that includes all of the leaves. In fact, everything we're doing tonight is rescinding a specific policy around leaves because it's all been, it's all been compiled into one policy, which is 5401 that we've already adopted. So I recommend, oh, I don't recommend anything tonight. This is a first reading, so.
Questions, comments? Okay, so let's bring that back for a second reading.
Okay.
Next, we have Policy 5340, District in Service for Certificated Staff. This is also to be rescinded?
Yes, it's been included in Policy 5520, Staff Development, that we adopted earlier. And this was adopted in 1974, so it's probably outdated a little bit, and it's just time we've updated the staff development policy, and it's time to rescind this policy so we don't have duplication on the book.
Okay, moving on to Policy 6440, General Leaves of Absences, again, to be rescinded.
All right, this is, general leaves of absences were religious, paternity and adoption and bereavement for leave for death of immediate family member, and these are included in Policy 5403, Emergency and Discretionary Leaves, 5404, Family Maternity and Military Caregiver Leave, and in our collective bargaining agreement. So again, it would be a duplication after we've had the others adopted.
Questions? That one back to us, John. Next, we have Policy 6442, Personal Leave, again, to be rescinded.
This is a policy that has, again, been on the books for quite a while. This, everything in this is included in the collective bargaining agreements and really doesn't need to be policy, because policy can't overrule the collective bargaining agreement, because we've made those agreements. So it's a duplication and is more clear in the collective bargaining agreement. So again, rescension is probably the appropriate action to take.
That one forward. And last but not least, Policy 6445, Educational Leave, again, to be rescinded.
And again, this one is included in the Policy 5403 that was adopted earlier, Emergency and Discretionary Leaves, and is a duplication, so it's time to remove it so we don't have confusion as people look at policy.
Questions? Yep, okay, it's nice to get those cleaned out. So let's bring all of those back for a second reading and...
Great, we'll do that.
Okay, next we have the superintendent's report.
All right, I do have a few things I want to bring to the board's attention tonight. First of all, I just wanted to say, we had our community salutes, which was an evening at Union High School a couple of weeks ago, where we honored all of the seniors who have enlisted and will be going into the military after graduation. And it was a really, really good event. And we had, it's for the whole county, it's not just for Evergreen, but we hosted it, but we had well over 100, about almost 120, 30 kids there, young people there who have enlisted, and I really like what the community has done to recognize these people who have made a commitment for the next number of years of their life to defend us and our freedoms. So it was a great night. I also wanted to point out to everybody that the governor visited Hila High School, that was mentioned earlier in the minutes, but he came to see what was going on, and he spent his whole time talking with students and going into each of the programs at Hila and finding deeper knowledge about it. And I thought the governor was wonderful with our students. He really took the time to listen, he really took the time to interact, and spend the time that he came to do. It wasn't a, let's get a photo op or any of that stuff. It was really about spending time with our children, and I thought it was a really great day. So we thank the governor for his time. Tomorrow morning, I will be meeting with Jamie Herrera Butler at her request to discuss a bill she's working on around chronic absenteeism. And she's looking for ways to support families and schools to get more students to school on a regular basis, because the chronic absenteeism is a problem in our district, and it's a problem in most districts. in most districts across the country. And it's whenever a student misses more than 10% of the days in a school year, that's a lot of days gone. And trying to come up with ways to support. I spent some time talking to our principals about it, and there's a number of reasons. Sometimes it's babysitting. Sometimes it's just the rent pressures and the moving around and dealing with that stuff. Sometimes it's kids stay up too late at night gaming, playing their video and get real stimulated by that and find school. Sometimes it's avoidance. I've missed a few days. I don't want to go back and have to deal with all that makeup, and I get into that pattern of avoiding. So we'll have some good conversations about that. And hopefully, we'll be able to see if we can't help her structure some supports that would help kids be able to get to school on a more regular basis.
Does that happen?
I don't know that, Mike. I will find that out, yes. Thank you. Distinguished Grad's Award for Cascadia is this Thursday evening, and we have a number of students in a number of programs who will be receiving awards at that event. I will be there, and if anybody else wants to come, you're certainly welcome. 6 o'clock in the evening at Cascadia should be done by about 7:30. Wanted to recommend everybody that this Friday, the 12th, is a principal for a day, our last principal for a day this year. We'll have that usual luncheon that we do at Crestline, probably around 11:30, quarter to 12. Invite any of you to be there. If you're going to be there, I'd like it if you would let Elizabeth know so that we don't violate the open meetings law. I'd also like to let you know that next Monday, the 15th, at 6 o'clock at Cascade Park Library is the Arts Award Night. And this is the night when there will be the opening display of all of our children's artwork that have been selected, and then the awards for Superintendent's Awards and some other kinds of awards that we give. This is a really nice art show for our children because it's not judged by their teacher or it's not judged by the school. We have professional artists who do the adjudicating. And so when a student is selected for their work, it's pretty prestigious. And then the ones that are selected will get sent to the Office of Superintendent Public Construction and will be on display at OSPI during the summer. So it's a really nice night. And then Friday, the 19th, at 9:30 in the morning, is the Children's Cultural Parade that we're doing for the 15th straight year, which is a parade for our third graders in selected classrooms with a number of selected classrooms from the Vancouver School District. And we usually have well over 1,000 third graders marching through the fort and marching through the parade grounds and then into the fort. And the mayor and others being there to welcome them and have a few words with them. If you're coming to that, I'd also like it if you could let us know. I am really disappointed because that is one, the first time in 15 years I can't go because of a conflict. So Dr. Stich is going to attend for me. So he's going to have to carry that banner.
All right.
It's all right.
But those are the things that are coming up now in the next board meeting, and I wanted to get them out to you, okay? Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have any board comments?
Foundation's doing a fundraiser Thursday evening. That's another, it's actually the first annual, I think, but a couple of more fundraisers throughout the year.
Bunko night?
That's the bunko. Yeah, I think Victoria and I are signed up and ready to go.
Right across the street from my office, over at Divine Consign, so how could I not be there?
Right.
That'll be fun. And I do love myself some bunko. It'll be fun.
Well, I regret that I'll be out of town for the bunko, but I've only ever tried it once. I missed the last board meeting because I was out of town with a student group. Union Action Team won a wild card slot. They didn't win the state competition or the super regional competition to get to go, but this particular organization invites teams that didn't to fill in the competition. And they went and contended. And I got to watch what I now think of as the cream of the union's crop when it comes to engineering students rebuild their robot twice and contend in ways that they didn't think they could. So it was a great opportunity to see that. And then I went with John last week, Tuesday, to Legacy or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday to Legacy High School and got a look at some of the classrooms in there and how our alternative learning experience high school is developing. There's a lot of hope that I don't think was in the alternative experience growing there that the staff and the principal there are working on. But the most impressive thing I think I saw was through some interns, some students that were working on an internship with Columbia Machine. Is that the right name of the company, is Columbia Machine? And it really surprised me because these students weren't, you know, fetching donuts for machinists or standing back and just watching things. They were involved in quality control, and they were expected to show up for 6:00 AM shifts and things that a lot of, you know, a lot of high schoolers don't usually care to do. They gave us a lesson in workflow, workflow management and quality control that just kind of blew me away. And I saw so much employability in that group of six or seven students, male and female both, for manufacturing and management work that I didn't expect to see. So I'm real happy with what I saw at Legacy that day, and I'm really excited to see what happens as they continue to develop the program.
I almost forgot that I went on the community tour, which I've decided I've become a huge fan of the community tours. I, yeah, they're fun.
Yeah.
But we got to go to Orchards, Covington and Heritage that day. All the schools were really impressive. I think the people on the tour were really impressed with the student leaders that took us around the school. I heard a lot of feedback about that. It was really good stuff, and I think they're excited about what's happening in the classroom.
Talked about the Energy Star?
I talked about the Energy Star. Couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC along with Dr. Stich. We went to the awards dinner for the Energy Star. It was our sixth year for sustained excellence in energy savings. It was really a fun event. We got to, there's only three school districts and a school association that won the award nationwide. So it's a pretty prestigious honor for the district and for our staff and our students who are aware of, you know, things that we're doing to be energy conscious in our schools and our buildings, so.
It is a big deal to get to go. I've had that opportunity, and it is pretty amazing to see. Because you're right there with all the big corporations that are...
Yeah, across, I talked to a couple of the corporations. I was like, I was the, I don't know, some, I think he was like the CFO or something for Haynes Corporation. And I was like, oh, well, where's your plant? And he's like, oh, we have 70 plants all over the world. And I'm like, oh. So, because I was thinking that maybe they're in the Midwest somewhere, right, making the shirts, but they're all over the world. And so it's interesting that those companies are practicing those same things that we are in our district and being recognized for it.
Strikes me about that is that we're doing that with roughly half our square footage in portable buildings. And that's not nothing.
It's actually the sixth year in a row that we were sustaining, and there were two years prior to that where we were first recognized as Energy Star Partners. So that's eight years in a row that we've been recognized. And the amount of money that we have saved from putting into utilities and instead putting into the classroom has been pretty phenomenal in the multimillion dollar savings. So it's a program that I think we can all be proud of, and we've had huge cooperation from staff and students to make sure that happens. And we're going to continue it because it makes it.
Maybe I'll add that I wasn't able to go on the community tour, but I went to the lunch afterwards, and yeah, it seemed like the patrons were really excited about...
Of course he did.
Wow. Also, my car got hit in the parking lot.
That was an expensive lunch.
Poor thing.
It was there, too. I sat at the table with the Spanish-speaking families, and they love Derek Garrison. He speaks Spanish fluently, and he's perfect for heritage in that way, too.
Yeah, their kids are attending Covington and Heritage, and so they were really interested in what happens. And I think that's great for anybody who wants that chance to come in and see what's happening in, you know, maybe not just their child's classroom, but all the classrooms or other schools that their kids don't attend. It's a perfect opportunity.
I did get a chance to go see Guys and Dolls at Evergreen High School, the musical that they're putting on. And last week was the first week. This week is the second week, so it's still going on like Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Saturday, right.
It was a great show. The kids did a really good job.
That's how they get this.
Yes.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
You're still charged.
I didn't, I didn't check.
It's double for you.
Yeah, double for you.
Trouble makers.
It's a great show.
It's a Peta fee.
And then...
Sorry. Delete that from the film.
How about the school board panel we did?
Got a lot to talk about.
Oh, okay.
So go ahead.
And then last night, Victoria and I were fortunate enough to participate on a school board panel at the ESD 112. It was a presentation, it was a meeting put on by WASDA for potential people that want to run for a school board. So it was a chance to learn about the role of being on a school board, and with us being on the panel, two of the three people on the panel, we were able to share our experiences about being on the board.
People that attended are here tonight, and I'm happy to see them here. Good. Is there anything else anybody wanted to add? Okay. I had the pleasure of going to Hila High's first showcase, and it was fun. The stuff that they're working on, it just, sometimes it just blows my mind. But, I mean, they had kids up there wrapping bandages and doing all the medical techniques. They had a simulation that if something happened in a stadium, all kinds of different injuries, and they were made up to look really awfully injured. And, you know, what to do in an emergency in a limited amount of time, you know, and how to move. They even had one that didn't make it, so they just got left behind. It was just get the rest of the victims out of there and to the hospital. So it was pretty fascinating, and I mean, they really knew what they were doing. And then they had some videos that they presented of some of their work that they're doing and different things throughout the school. It was very impressive, the kinds of things that they know. And so I attended that right before the governor's visit. That was just, you know, a few days later, so it was fun to see him get to see what our kids are doing. And it was just so, it was fun to listen to what the kids were saying and his reaction because he was, I think, a little stunned at a couple of the things. So he hadn't been to the school since it first was opening, so it was nice for him to have students to visit with. Oh, I got to visit with the administrative interns, and they did a very good job of grilling me about, you know, the board and what we do and the role that we play for the district. So that was really nice. We've got some great people in that group. Let's see here. Oh, this morning, yes. I went to the first meeting. I was invited to participate on what they're calling Vancouver Strong. It's the Executive Sponsors Council, and it's a group of community leaders that will be working over the next year to help the city develop a process for visioning for the future needs of the city. And so I was asked to be on there because I'm a business owner plus my board role. And so we had our first meeting this morning, and it's a great group, and I'm excited to see what we end up coming up with. So I'll keep you on the loop on that. Hi, little antics. Okay. Do we have any future agenda items that anyone wants?
I was going to say last time got taken care of.
Well, good. That's great.
I think it's on the agenda now, to talk about the website and so forth.
Oh, yeah.
We're set.
Good.
I was curious about, because I thought we were going to bring back the book study.
That's next, next time.
It's next, it's next meeting.
Something I had in my mind, it was this time.
Little more time to keep on reading.
Well, we finished it a long time ago, but...
Yeah.
Ob's request.
I wanted to be there, to be sure to be there.
Well, yeah. Maybe that's why I had it in my mind, because I knew you'd be back today, but...
Okay, good. Okay, now is the time for citizen comments. Do we have anyone who's requested to speak to the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to visit with the board tonight? Hey, oh, yes. It is not on the agenda.
And because of that, we can't speak to it because it wasn't put in the press, okay? But we certainly want to hear from you.
So we can, someone can chat with you, and do you want to, so if you want to comment on it, we can do that tonight. In citizen comments, we can talk about things that are not legal or personnel-related, and the person that comes up can talk for three minutes. We need you to state your name and address for the record, and the board can listen, but we cannot respond because it's not an agenda item. So if you would like to address the board, we're happy to hear from you tonight. Yeah. Okay.
Great.
Thank you. And state your name and address for the record, please.
Etchmark 13507, Northeast 21st Street in Vancouver, Washington. I would just really like for the board, to thank the board for the past opportunities to have that program in place for children. My lovely daughter is the one who spoke to you first. Mr. Dieter very eloquently spoke today about the importance of keeping children engaged, keeping them attending school. I can tell you personally, I know many children who probably wouldn't still go if it hadn't been for that program. I know many who've faced their own personal battles, and the reason why they were able to face it and move forward is because of the work ethic and the values that they learned in that program. I'm aware that it's not a money-making activity, but it's an extremely important activity. So we've appreciated the past opportunity. We hope that future opportunities continue to present themselves at Evergreen High School and throughout the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Does there anyone else who'd like to address the board tonight? Now, the board will go into recess where we will sign documents for, from the consent agenda. Then we will reconvene in a board workshop where we will have, we will workshop from the Instructional Materials Committee. We will have some information on mindfulness and meditation, legislative updates, some policy review, a budget update, and an additional superintendent's update. Thank you.